Uh, sergeants, we need a few more members so that we can begin today. I want to thank Mr. Bluman for Obama and Buscaino, Harris, Dawson, and O'Farrell for being members of today's on-time caucus.
Um, I can, I'll have to table it up though. The EDA.
Yeah, I want to take off an item that's valuable to my.
I. I will write the report. Don't get that actually. Uh, well, PTA and like, well, they also want, uh, what, what term for the other parties are. I know, I don't, I was like in the, the supply closet, like getting stuff, cause I saw like a supply plan here. No, I mean, like I go over. Yeah, yeah, so like, um, some of it is like, it was sort of like, it's like office space where like you need to report for it. And so, it's like, there's seriously a form for it, I didn't know. Alright, I guess we're doing this. Yes, yes, there's a lot of spreadsheets and a lot of like, interesting processes that are.
(pause)
items 1F and 1Z be reduced to $1,387.29 and $1,634.20 respectively, and that items 1U and 1AD be continued to March 18.
Okay, so without objection, that will be the order. Continue.
Item one is an item notice for public hearing. We do have cards, sir.
Okay, continue.
That brings us to items two through seven. They're items which public hearings have been held.
Members specials? I do not see any. Let's prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
All right, let's, uh...
And, Mr. President, item two will go over, uh, one week for a second, excuse me, um, will go over to March 15th for a second read unless reconsidered later with 12 members. That brings us to items eight through 11. They're items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do we, we have cards?
Yes, sir, on eight, nine, and 10.
All right, that brings us where? Let's vote on 11 then, members specials. Let's, on item 11, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Clerk, that brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings council to presentations or items called special.
Thank you. Why don't I ask Mr. Englander if you'd join me at the center aisle? And we'll get Ms. Martinez to manage the president's chair.
All right. How are you? Come on, let's get started. Good morning, good morning.
Mr. President.
Yeah, please. Let's make this an attractive photo here. Madam President and members, today is a special day. Today, we recognize, acknowledge, celebrate the good works, and say so long to one of the best, uh, that, and the brightest that we've had for this, at the city of Los An- Angeles and, and Jim Featherstone. Let's give Jim a round of applause. He's standing right behind me. General manager of our emergency management department. He will be retiring in a few days, and I look at you, and I hate you because you look younger than me, and you're retiring. But, you know, Jim is a native of Washington, D.C., came to Los Angeles, got a job with the fire department in the mid-1980s, worked his way up through the ranks, uh, became a supervisor at one point in time, was even a labor negotiator, uh, then was asked, um, to step in and pinch-hit as we reorganized the Department of Emergency Management. Within a year, he was asked to stay on as the general manager, and for those of us that have been here a while, we have not seen that department in the shape that it's been in since, uh, since, uh, big Jim has come in and reorganized that department. Let's give him another round of applause to James Featherstone. And so then, uh, a funny thing happened. I mean, we had, like, our fourth vacancy in a row where we were looking for a fire chief. So what did our new mayor do? He asked, uh, Mr. Featherstone if he would step in, hold the fort, and, uh, kind of reorganize some things. He did that. He did that with honor, and then we were fortunate enough to get him to return back to his normal post, and then all of a sudden, I hear he's gonna say so long. When you're a kid, all of us remember, there was always one kid on the block that you would always try to pick to be on your team. There was always one kid that was good at just about everything that he and she did, and I submit to you that that is James Featherstone, one of the best utility people in the business. We are gonna miss him, the city of Los Angeles, because you could put him in just about any position, and he would perform at an extremely high level. So Jim, I want to just say personally, it was an honor to work with you and to get to know you. I wish you and your wife success. I cannot believe that you are really retiring, retiring, so, uh, I, you know, when, when you get ready to leave, I want you to whisper in my ear and tell me exactly what the heck you're gonna be doing, but you will be missed. You know, thank you for the service that you've given to this great city. At this time, I'd like to ask another individual who has worked extremely closely with you to come up and say a few words, and that's President Pro Tim of the Council, Mitch Englander.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You know, it's bittersweet to, uh, to think that Jim's leaving and going on to Bermuda shorts and margaritas, beachfront properties, traveling the world, but well-earned. You think about the most important function that we have here in the city of Los Angeles, and that's to keep people safe, period. Then you think about keeping them safe in the worst disasters that you can fathom, in the worst emergencies during the lowest times in people's lives, and then you gotta think that we have to put somebody in charge before all of us to represent us and think about those contingency plans, the operation plans, preparing over 4 million people and all the businesses and all the visitors here for emergency preparedness, and then to think about the fact that we are by far, bar none, the safest large city and the best prepared in the country, and then you think about who's responsible for that? Jim Featherstone has earned us that mark, and you think with all the things that we go through, and in fact, my district, as many of you know, has been labeled the epicenter of disaster. I'm not sure that that's a good thing.
I'm not gonna say anything.
But we certainly see our fair share of disasters. Our annual fire season, you buy a home in CD12, it comes with marshmallows. We've had the Chatsworth train accident, which was the worst horrific train accident that we've ever seen, killing 25 people, injuring over 175 people, and preparing for that, and then the aftermath. The hardest part of an emergency is actually the recovery. Right now, we're dealing certainly with the Aliso Canyon gas leak, and Jim set up a center in our district to bring all those families, not just home, but home safely. If you think about all the things we go through in planning, not just for emergencies, not just for perhaps the inevitable terrorist attack, but just all the good times too, from the Lakers parades and the Kings, all the things we have to anticipate for, who's at the cornerstone of all that but Featherstone? He is the cornerstone and has been, irreplaceable, bar none. He has set the bar high, and we are safe because of it. The programs that he's instituted, working with us on the okay-help sign, that we know all of our neighbors are gonna now have to be the first responders because we don't have enough to go around in the city in the event of the next major earthquake, and that's going to happen. He helps us prepare for that. And bringing neighborhood councils and community-based organizations and faith-based organizations together and thinking proactively how to reach out to them, get them cert-certified, working with the fire department, it's been Jim doing all that work, working with us. This is a big, big loss to all of us, make no mistake. He has really set the bar high, but he's put programs in place that will outlive him and all of us, and for that, I'm very grateful. Jim, congratulations to you and your wife. You've earned it. You've made us a better city and a better people and safer because of all of your work and your dedication, your devotion to the people of Los Angeles, and we say, congratulations. God bless you.
Thank you. So, on behalf of all of us...
Now, I want to be next to you.
Yes, yes.
You next to me.
Uh, Mr. President, this frame's taller than we are. On behalf of all of us, we all signed this personally, I want to say thank you, congratulations, and you deserve it. We're all forever in your gratitude. Thank you so much.
Let's get a photo right here.
Mr. Englander, Mr. Wesson, we have a few members on the queue.
Here, let's put it down here, otherwise, we're gonna be cropped out of the thing.
Mr. O'Farrell would like to say a few words.
Sure. Thank you, Madam President. I just want to rise and add my appreciation, words of appreciation for all that you have done and do every day, James, for two years, seven months, and 26 days, uh, as long as I've been in office, you have always been the consummate professional, from the time you were interim, uh, fire chief, and I, I had a real hard time not calling you Firestone, but now I've gotten used to Featherstone, and, and to your time as general manager in the emergency preparedness department, you really do set the example in professionalism and selflessness and going above and beyond, and I think that's your legacy, and I agree with, uh, Mr. Wesson, you seem way, way too young to be retiring, so, um, I look forward to supporting you in whatever your next endeavors may be, uh, and a big thank you from the 13th District.
Thank you. I want to add my voice to the voice and that everyone is making expression of gratitude for you and your, your, your sort of steely professionalism when it comes to all of this, which is also why I got such a kick out of when we discovered that my father-in-law was your teacher back in Washington, and he would describe a very different Jim Featherstone with big hair and a rabble-rouser, and, and, uh, we had some good laughs, you and me, when talking about, about, uh, about those days and, and these days, and, and you have just been, uh, so good to work with and so responsive. I mean, in my district out in the West Valley, working with my V-Prep task force, the Be More Prepared, not only doing the big job for the city, but when you saw that there was interest, uh, by the, by a local community in my, in my area and trying to, to push the level of preparedness, you, you jumped right in and you empowered folks in my district to make a difference, and so I really am grateful to all that you have done and the professionalism in which you've done it, uh, and it's a, it's a big loss for the city for, for you to be retiring, but I wish you nothing but the best and all good things.
Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jim, um, I have mixed feelings. I, I'm so happy for you, your wife, and your family, that now you get to spend time on your own and, and do all the things that you want to do, but it is a tremendous loss for the city of Los Angeles, and as far as the emergency management department's involved, you're the only one I knew, uh, you're the, uh, first person I met, you know, when I got here, and you've just been nothing but helpful, nothing but professional, nothing but always there, um, in, in, in light of potential crises and crises that have happened across the city, and I just really thank you for everything that you do, but knowing you, I'm sure you can't stay away too long, so, um, I'm sure we'll find something for you to do, but thank you so much, and thank you for all your service to the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, Jim, congratulations. I'm happy for you. Uh, you actually do look a little bit younger than you did just a couple weeks ago. I've known you for a lot of years. I've known you when I was a staffer, I've known you as an elected official, I've known you wearing various different hats, but I have one particular memory that stands out, and that's November 1st, 2013, uh, when we had the terrorist incident and the fatal shooting at Los Angeles International Airport. It was your first day, as I understand it, as I remember it anyway, as fire chief, as interim fire chief. What a hell of a first day it was, and I remember you that day at the airport, at the command center. There were a lot of folks, there were a lot of agencies, there was a lot of concern, there was a lot of confusion. You were calm, you were steely, you were steady, and you helped make sure that the city's response to that day was smart and coordinated, coordinated, and you made sure that, that cool heads prevailed all day. Uh, you were a credit to you and to the fire department and to the city of Los Angeles, and I just want to thank you so much for that day and for every other day that you've worked for the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you. Mr. Carras?
Thank you, Madam President, and, uh, a lot of what I would say has been said by everyone else. You've done an amazing job, and you've been great to work with. Personally, I want to thank you for something that now is minor, but wasn't originally, which is, uh, getting the city well-prepared for El Nino. Now, of course, we thought it was going to be Godzilla El Nino, so far, it's been Pussycat El Nino, um, but we couldn't take any chances. It still may hit us hard in March, uh, and you've done an amazing job in preparing us and the city for that, along with everything else you've done, so I just wanted to add my voice to those thanking you for your incredible service and the wonderful job that you've done, and I, I wish you a great retirement.
Madam President, Mr. President, council member, the distinguished members of this body, uh, I'm always humbled when I come before this group because this group represents the people of the city of Los Angeles, uh, who myself and my family have committed our lives to supporting and, and making safer for the last three decades. First, I'd like to, in front of this body, thank my wife, Sean, who, without her, none of this would have ever been possible, uh, for me, so. She, she is one of my strongest compass points, and, uh, she makes it so that every day for the last 30 years has been a labor of love for me. I have enjoyed coming to work this morning, no less than I enjoyed the first day on duty in 1986 as a young recruit firefighter, so, uh, it's been my honor, my privilege, and my pleasure to serve the city of Los Angeles in a public safety capacity. Unfortunately, I don't know how to do anything else. Now, of course, we thought it was going to be Godzilla, El Nino, so far it's been Pussycat, El Nino, but we couldn't take any chances. It still may hit us hard in March, and you've done an amazing job in preparing us and the city for that, along with everything else you've done. So, I just wanted to add my voice to those thanking you for your incredible service and the wonderful job that you've done, and I wish you a great retirement.
Madam President, Mr. President, councilmember, the distinguished members of this body, I'm always humbled when I come before this group because this group represents the people of the city of Los Angeles, who myself and my family have committed our lives to supporting and making safer for the last three decades. First, I'd like to, in front of this body, thank my wife, Sean, who without her, none of this would ever have been possible for me. She is one of my strongest compass points, and she makes it so that every day for the last 30 years has been a labor of love for me. I have enjoyed coming to work this morning no less than I enjoyed the first day on duty in 1986 as a young recruit firefighter. So, it's been my honor, my privilege, and my pleasure to serve the city of Los Angeles in a public safety capacity. Unfortunately, I don't know how to do anything else in terms of occupations, I'm a one-trick pony. And I thank you for providing me the opportunity. A young kid from southeast Washington, DC, never have any aspirations or any thoughts of being able to stand before a body such as this and in a city as great as this, and to have had the last 30 years the opportunity to literally enjoy coming to work every day. And so, that's a testament to government, that's a testament to the city of Los Angeles. And thank you for the very kind words, but I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to serve. Thank you all very, very much appreciated.
Mr. Featherstone, hold on for just a second. Mr. Price would like to also say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too just want to say, Jim, thank you for your service. You know, I've only known you for a short period of time, two and a half years here, but you've always been very positive, very encouraging. You've been a real positive role model for all of us, and so, we just appreciate your service, appreciate your commitment to the community, your professionalism, and your willingness to give back through your professional and other activities. And so, we're just sorry to see you go, but we know that your hand and your handprints are still all over our community, and we appreciate it, and we appreciate you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You and your wife.
And Mr. Featherstone, I just want to thank you for my first helicopter ride. We survived. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Harris-Dawson, ready for your presentation?
As we continue up until the very last day, our celebration of African-American History Month, I am proud to bring to our body this morning a celebration of city family members who are alumni of historically black colleges and universities. There are over 107 historically black colleges and universities throughout the nation. They are both private and public. The first historically black college or university to hand out degrees was the one and only Lincoln University, and it wasn't quite that year, but a little bit later, they gave a degree to our own president of the city council, Hope Wesson. We have a sweatshirt for him because we wanted him to fit in today, so we're going to ask him to come down and join us and receive his sweatshirt from Lincoln University. Let's give him, all give him a big round of applause. There are, again, there are so many schools, the historically black college movement started, as you know, before apartheid in the United States was defeated. African-Americans weren't allowed to go to the regular colleges and universities, and so the community said, "We'll build our own." And we built our own, and we built them all over the country, and even after apartheid fell and we had integration, those institutions remain important institutions, and they're important to our city. Behind me, I think we had over 60 RSVPs for today, and there are folks from police and fire and engineering and ITA and the city attorney's office and general services, and almost every department in our city is staffed in one way or another by an alumni of historically black college or university. So, let's give them a big round of applause. I'm going to do something very, very dangerous here. We asked everybody to wear their sweatshirts and their jackets to celebrate, and so, we're going to try to do a little bit of a roll call. I'm probably going to get in trouble for this, but we're going to try it anyway. So, let's see here, we've got Arkansas in Pliny Bluff, we've got Clark Atlanta, I've got my own staff member, Bernard Dory, is a graduate of Clark Atlanta, Atlanta University. We've got Fisk, Grambling State, Florida A&amp;M. We've got a big contingency from Hampton University in Virginia, a big contingency from Howard University and Howard Law School. My own staff member, Chanel Brown, is a graduate of Howard. We have Langston in Lincoln, we have Morris Brown, North Carolina Central University, Prairie View A&amp;M, Shaw, Southern Tennessee State, Tuskegee, Xavier, Bitterd College, Central State College, and we have Spelman College in Atlanta. And we have, last but not least, in Atlanta, Georgia, the alma mater of Dr. Martin Luther King, Spike Lee, Atlanta Mayor, Mayor Maynard Jackson, and our own 8th District Council Member, Marquise Harris-Dawson, and our Assembly Member, Sebastian Ridley-Thomas, the one and only Morehouse College. So, I want to thank everybody for coming out this morning. It's a very important time in the movement for historically black colleges and universities, especially the public ones, because a lot of states are saying, "Well, since we have integration now, we don't have to fund you. We can cut you and, you know, make you go into the pool with everybody else." And the reason that's the wrong thing to do at this moment, today, in 2015, more than half of African-American doctors are undergraduates of historically black colleges and universities. More than half of black engineers, more than half of African-American attorneys are graduates of historically black colleges and universities. So, this movement is still very important to the country, very important to the community, and very important to the city of Los Angeles. So, thank you all for joining me in this celebration, and thank all of you for what you have done for the city and what you will do in the years to come.
Just quickly, I will say, I know I have another, I was at breakfast a few weeks ago with my wife, minding my business, had my recalenders, and all of a sudden, I saw this tall dude, he kept staring at me and staring at me all through breakfast, and I said, "Oh, God, maybe he needs a tree trimmed or something." But from Wrecking Parks, I want my fellow Lincoln University. That's right. And I just want to say this, that to Mr. Harris-Dawson, that I think this is very fitting, that we are celebrating a Black History Month, that you bring in institutions that have produced some of the best minds that this country has ever known. I want to say where it relates to Lincoln University, my alma mater, that it changed my life. I would not be here if the professors did not take the time to force me, to force me. Because, trust me, I did not go to college to learn, okay? But they forced me and changed my life. And then, I heard a big scream where it related to Hampton, Hampton's in the house. Almost every other member of my family on my mother's side went to Hampton, so I got to give Hampton a shout-out as well. But to all of you, thank you for all of the work that you provide for the city of Los Angeles. It's a great day, we should all be proud, and we, yes, we should all show off our colors. God bless you all.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I just want to thank Councilman, Marquise Harris-Dawson, for his outstanding leadership on our council and in bringing these outstanding professionals to us today. Unfortunately, I didn't go to a historically black college, I went to Stanford, historically white college. But two key members of my staff are proud graduates. Herb Weston III went to Morris Brown, and James Westbrook, my deputy, field deputy, district director, I should say, went to Howard. And so, a strong and long legacy supporting historically black colleges, appreciate the unique role that those colleges play and the unique role that you're playing as professionals, as community activists, as individuals concerned, not just about your welfare, but reaching back as well. So, congratulations, keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. So, we'll retire, I think we'll go the back way to the room to get some photos. Yeah, we're going to, we'll go there. All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to take just a minute, if I could, to introduce board members of the Westwood Neighborhood Council that are here visiting and taking a tour of City Hall.
Can you have them stand, Mr. Corretts? Who are they, our friends in the back? Wave.
Yeah, if they could stand up and be recognized, President Jerry Brown, Sandy Brown, Rosebath Farhanapour, Scott Whittle, Marcelo Robinson, Angus Beverly, Connie Bukitis, and Laura Winnicow, all members of the Westwood Neighborhood Council, so let's give them a hand.
Welcome to your City Hall. Thank you for being here. Thank you, Mr. Corretts. Mr. Price, are you ready for your presentation, sir?
Before we begin, let me just give a shout-out to the students from Santee, are in the house, Santee High School.
Santee High School, are you here?
Don't be bashful.
Welcome.
Madam President, members, let me direct your attention to the screen. There's going to be a brief video before our presentation on the Youth Orchestra of Los Angeles.
So, we're currently preparing for the Super Bowl, which is really cool. Finding our weird play at the Super Bowl is amazing. I watch it every year, I watch football, I love football, and getting to play on that stage like all the other artists is amazing.
Knowing that so many people are coming together, people that we don't know, the people that are going to be in the recording studio, and obviously Coldplay, and Davi Day, who works so hard to arrange their music, it's amazing because there's so many people working together to make this possible.
The day Chris Martin showed up at rehearsal was a normal day until, obviously, until he showed up.
Rue just felt like, it just felt like this freeze of air, and everybody's just like...
I think you guys are going to do the Super Bowl with us, right? Well, thank you so much, you sound brilliant.
I started hearing him sing. So, I like got excited, so then I started playing more, like excitedly and expressing my emotions through my instrument.
And it feels really good to be performing with people and like artists, amazing artists, who believe in the same things that we do.
Like a team spirit, you know? Just what your orchestra is, it's all of you combining to make something bigger than yourself.
He told us, "It's a ball, a big family, we're going to have fun, jump around, play with each other, everybody's going to go crazy, it's going to be a good time."
Playing music is like really fun and stuff, but when you do it with passion, it's on a completely different level.
Forget about the football game, this is what people really...
I'm excited to play with people I care about, that I love, actually.
Those don't know music, they're just going to be like, "Whoa, those kids are actually really cool. They're playing classical music and they're playing on stage with Coldplay, like that's amazing."
Madam President, members, I'm proud to recognize the Youth Orchestra of LA, Yola, with us today. They are an important project in Expo Park, Expo Center located in Expedition Park, and their partnership with the LA Philharmonic has really generated some excitement and some real notoriety. Of course, you may have seen Yola at the Super Bowl, they performed along with Beyonce, Coldplay, and others. Just underscoring the fact that music is a critical learning tool that improves cognitive development, math, reading, helps foster teamwork, and so, it's an important program of the park and an exciting program for young people to be involved in. Joining me today in honor of these talented young people is the Executive Director of Expo, Ms. Belinda Jackson, and we're going to ask her to say a few words and also introduce our collaborative partners. Belinda?
Good morning and thank you so much, Councilman Price. Thank you all for this honor this morning. I know all of you saw the Super Bowl halftime show, because I know I was looking at it, and it was just awesome. I still can't believe it that our kids from South LA were on the screen there with Coldplay and Beyonce, it was just a time to remember. I know that this is something they will never, ever forget. I know I will never forget it. I'm especially honored that Expo Center, it's important to note, that Expo Center was the first Yola project. We started in 2007 with just 40 kids from South Los Angeles that had no music lessons at all, and now, today, we are at capacity with 300 kids. That's really some success. Thank you, thank you. I would like to thank all of my partners that are here with me today because it's very important to note that this was, this is a very, very successful partnership between the Los Angeles Philharmonic, the Friends of Expo Center, the Harmony Project continues to be such a wonderful, successful program. Let me first introduce our partners from the Harmony Project. We have Lenny Borst, excuse me, I'm sorry. We have Cynthia Rodriguez, she's representing the Harmony Project. And the Harmony Project, one of the things that they do, they recruit all the teaching artists, they provide onsite coordinator with, Cynthia is the onsite coordinator, they manage all the music lessons, and they provide a host of supportive services for the families. And next, I'd like to introduce the Phil. We have Lenny Borst, we have Gretchen Nielsen, and we also have Rebecca Segal. And one of the things that they do a lot, first of all, they design the program, they provide financial support, which covers all the instruments, the conductor, a program manager. The Phil also creates wonderful opportunities for our youth to perform at a variety of venues like the Super Bowl, the Hollywood Bowl, just to name a few. Next, of course, we have the Friends of Expo Center, we're represented today, Julia, Julia Fur, and we also have Stephen Smith Contrera, Contrera, excuse me. And the Friends, first of all, the Friends of Expo are our nonprofit partner. They have raised millions of dollars over the years, but for this particular program, the Friends provide financial support for a wonderful after-school enrichment program, program manager, and opportunities for summer paid internship. Now for Expo Center. Expo Center provides a program space for 300 participants. My staff also coordinates all the facility management required for all the music lessons, rehearsals, and special sessions. In addition, we have a host of, full range of programs for the participants and their families. I also would like to introduce my staff person, Randy Kelly, the big guy right here. I do want to thank my staff as well, because this is a very, very innovative program. I want to thank them for embracing such a program, because this is not a program that is a core program in our department, but it's a wonderful program for our community. Thank you again, Councilman Price. I also want to thank the council for your time, and thank you for all the great work that you do every day for the citizens of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Well, on behalf of a grateful community, I'd like to present this certificate to the Expo Center Youth Orchestra of Los Angeles, on behalf of the city council, for your outstanding achievements and for your extraordinary participation in the 2016 NFL Super Bowl. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Price. Congratulations.
Thank you. Madam President, members, as we conclude a celebration of African-American Heritage Month, I'm excited to recognize five jazz and blues legends who've made contributions, many contributions to the legacy of music internationally and right here in Los Angeles. More specifically... More specifically, these legends have a real connection to Central Avenue, located in the Ninth District. In partnership with Ms. Linda Morgan of the Living Legend Foundation... Linda? And Living Legends, why don't you join us? Come on, come on down. Our first honoree is John B. Williams. John was born in the Bronx, New York. His music was influenced by Latin, Caribbean rhythm and blues arts of form. In 1969, adding classical music and electric sounds to his bass rhythm, John was recommended to be the musical director of The Tonight Show, starring Johnny Carson, where he grooved with the band for seven years, four years in New York and three here in L.A. Over the years, John's added dramatic, socially-conscious poetry and monologues to his music, giving birth to jazz theater, which continues to combine the two art forms of spoken word and jazz. John B. Williams, he's a real jazz legend. Our next honoree is Sweet Baby J. Sweet Baby is an award-winning vocalist, recording artist, a composer, a director, a writer, an educator, and artistic director of the Palm Springs Women's Jazz Festival. Although known for her energetic stage presence and powerful vocals, some critics describe her as a jazz singer, others as a blues singer, but all agree that she is a versatile songwriter and a storyteller. J has been featured at festivals and concert halls throughout the world. She has produced numerous major events throughout the country, and also serves as Creative Managing Director by the Educational Theater Institute, providing enrichment programs for Los Angeles youth. She is a real jazz legend. Our next honoree is Bubba Jackson. Bubba was born in Harlem, New York, where his mom introduced him to gospel, blues, and rhythm and blues. Bubba is well-known and well-liked as an award-winning radio and TV personality and a seasoned concert promoter. His stressful experience includes the Prince Al Shriners Concert in L.A., the New York, the New Orleans and St. Louis Jazz Festivals, the Doheny Blues Festival, and the Central Avenue Jazz Festival, just to name a few. The L.A. Times' calendar quoted, was quoted as saying that "He is one of the best things about the drive time in L.A.," is Bubba Jackson on KLON, F-88.1. Bubba is a real jazz legend. Next, we have Elena Gilliam. Elena, an astonishing jazz vocalist with a rare depth of natural talent. Her level of performance is widely applauded as being similar to jazz greats Sarah Vaughan, Ella Fitzgerald, Diana Washington, and the like. Her extraordinary sound is indeed a treat for anyone who appreciates a true songstress. Elena using vocal performance to foster empowerment with at-risk youth, was awarded the 2015 Kenneth A. Pierceney Foundation Artist Outreach Project Grant, as she continues to work encouraging young adults and youth to build personal strength through the performance of jazz and other musical genres. Ella Gilliam, she is a real jazz legend. Why are we shooting it sideways? Why don't you go over here this way? I said, why don't you come around here, so you don't... Okay, our final honoree is Sherri Pruitt. Sherri is known as a unique and powerful song stylist, an entertainer, and songwriter. Sherri's musical and performance inspiration comes from Mahalia Jackson, Coco Taylor, Aretha Franklin, Diana Washington, Gladys Knight, and many more. In 1974, she moved to California to pursue her career and take vocal coaching from Ronnie Housley and the Evangeline Stewart. She has played many theaters from New York to L.A., has done sessions with Cold Six Records, M5 Media, and is presently working with Future Tech Records. She is also collaborating with the Third Degree Blues Band and the Sherri Pruitt Blues Project Band, and the All-Stars Blues Band. She is a real jazz legend. Thank you. Members, that concludes this presentation, but I would like, I would like to give... We want to, you know, the jazz, these jazz lessons are a real labor of love for Linda. She works hard on it, has been a strong promoter of the, not just the genre, but those individuals who've been so responsible for it. I'd like to give her a chance to say a few words at this time. Linda Morgan.
Thank you, Councilwoman Price. Good morning. My name is Linda Morgan. As Councilwoman said, I am the founder of the Living Legend Foundation, and to date, we have honored 100 jazz and blues legends here in California. We do have a few other ones that have come out to support today. Al Williams, Leroy Music Harrison, Billy Mitchell, Dalili Pearson, Eloise Lawes. Billy Mitchell are all here to support in the work that we've been doing here in L.A. We thank you for allowing us to have this presentation during African-American Appreciation Month.
Mr. Clerk, let's move on to item eight.
Madam President, that's item eight, called Special for Cards.
Mr. Walsh, item eight, sir?
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, blogging at JWalshConfidential, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Again, we have a black victim, Deantro LaJohn Gant Jr. June, that's how long it took them to come up with the reward, $50,000 for the arrest of whoever murdered Deantro LaJohn Gant. I will add $3 million to the reward, and I'm not afraid of having to, for someone collecting, because as we know, you haven't had a black person murdered in this city with a reward on his or her head that you collected. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Next speaker is Wayne Spindler, item eight.
The Pig will address the council.
Yes, I do not like these fucking awards. I've been watching Joe Buscagno for years, and all of these reserve officers, including the Englander, do not go out...
You're not speaking on the item, Mr. Spindler.
They should go out and find the killers. Why are they here? Get out, take a radio, and find the killers. Why do we need a reward? We need more police officers looking for killers. Take them off of patrol duty, find the killers with the cops. Why are these sergeants here? They could be out looking for the killer. Instead, you're relying on the snitches who get stitches, who become police bitches. Do not trust the LAPD. Vote no on this item. And finally, to quote Little Bozzy, "Fuck the police."
Next speaker, Juan Alcala, item eight.
We need a reward. Find out who killed all the American Indians and drove away the Mexicans and took away their land.
This speaker is not on topic.
Mr. Alcala, you're not speaking on the, on the item.
Oh, oh, no, this is a reward much smaller in size for somebody that killed somebody over there in the beautiful city of L.A., where nothing bad ever happens. Right city attorney, how much would you pay if, if the guy that had been killed was a blondie named Custer, the bastard? I don't know, that happened in a different dimension, in a different time, and it doesn't even apply to right now. Now, we gotta, we gotta talk about what's happening right now. This whole city is a piece of shit.
You're not talking about, you're not on the, on the subject.
Yeah, because there's crime. There's crime, there's trash all over the place. I'm talking about that.
The speaker is not on the topic.
A reward, a reward offer for, for the people that go around doing bad things. Why don't we offer a reward for City Hall? And I was just given another parking violation.
Thank you, Mr. Alcala. You're not on the subject. Thank you, sir. That concludes Cards on item eight. Mr. Clerk, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, next item, item number nine.
Item nine, called Special for Cards.
Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, at JWalshConfidential, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. This sounds like nothing. Vacation to vacate a portion of the alley west of Figaroa Street between Florence Avenue and Seventy-third. What does that mean? Somebody asked for it to be vacated. In other words, somebody said, "That's city property. I'm a developer. I want the property. I'm going to give all 15 of you money into your office holders accounts, and in exchange for that, I want you to give me this property." None of these scumbags up here, all 15 of them, will say anything. I'm asking you to tell me why you are vacating the property, and who you're giving it to. Other cities do it, but this city does it out of control. Alley vacation. Remember, this property is worth millions of dollars, these properties, and instead of fixing your streets, especially in the black and Hispanic areas, they're handing, giving this property away to who? To wealthy, white, and Chinese investors. If you're black, stay back. If you're brown, you can stay around, but if you're white or yellow, this city belongs to you, and blacks, get the hell out of this city! Get the hell out of the Oscars! Get the hell out! We're going to take over your whole neighborhood, tear it down, and move in rich Asians.
Mr. Walsh?
That's the plot. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Wayne Spindler on item number nine.
Yes, the puppet pig does not know that much about this item, but I'll speak on this item. This is this fucking bullshit that you have called developer payoffs, and I'm really surprised that this isn't CD8. I thought, I thought we changed the direction of CD8. I thought it's a new place. I thought it was like CD4, like David "Waaah!" I thought Marquezzi was going to be like that. I thought this was going to stop, but the same shit's going on in CD8.
The speaker's not on the item.
And we have to get this stopped. Who the fuck is getting this?
Mr. Spindler, you're not on the, you're not speaking on the item.
And where are they getting this? So, please, Marquezzi, vote no on this. This is absolute payoff.
Next speaker, Mr. Alcala.
Instead of giving that, all those payoffs to the developers, what you should do is give that money to the homeless, because they need a vacation from you assholes. This kind of vacation you're talking about, it's all about money, and the previous speakers were absolutely right. All you're interested is in money, 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 money for City Hall. What makes you think that you deserve the money?
You're not speaking on the, on the...
On the vacation, yeah. I'm talking about that damn vacation that you guys are going to take with the money the developers are going to give you. Yeah, that's the vacation you're going to get. I think you need a ticket to ride, so you invent a vacation of city streets and give them to the rich developers, because there is money to be made for City Hall employees. You bunch of crooked cockroaches.
Thank you, Mr. Alcala. You're not speaking on the subject. That concludes Cards on number nine. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, let's, let's go to number two for reconsideration.
Very good, Madam President. That would be item two, to be reconsidered for 12 members.
Okay, let's vote on reconsideration on item number two. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That matter is now before you.
Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Very well, we can, let's move on to item number 10.
Item 10, called Special for Cards.
Wayne Spindler, item number 10.
This is again, another situation where police need to go do the killing and the taking of the killer. First of all, $50,000 for what? For a fucking snitch? That is not enough money. I hear a lot of things about the snitches that get these stitches and these rewards. Do not trust the police. Do not trust the police. Do not take the money, especially from these people. Now, we need to get Officer Buscagno and Officer Englander off their fucking chairs and into the community to find the killer.
He's not speaking on the item.
They know who the killer is.
You're not speaking on the item, sir. Get back on the item. I'm going to ask you to sit down.
Find him now.
That's it. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Spindler. Next speaker is John Walsh on item number ten.
Blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or Jay Walsh Confidential, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Again, another six months reward offer. And six months after that, if you said to me, "I could live until you caught Jamal Shortz's murderer," I would, I would accept it because I would live forever. You damn well know that this man was murdered in a gang thing. You collaborate with the gangs. You are on their side. Snitches get stitches. I want you to produce one black person in this city who will get up and say, "If I had information about this murder, I would give it to you and I would, I would feel that you would protect me." Every black person in this state knows, if they, and a lot of them have information, forty or fifty, if they give you information, they will be murdered. And then you'll have another reward. And if somebody does that and shot Shortz's killer, it's on and on and on. This is a charade. It's bullshit. You know, and I want someone to get up here and tell me how many rewards you have given out to gang killers for arresting and prosecuting a gang killer in the past ten years. And I'll tell you what it is. Zero! Zero is the number. And still you play this little game because you're, you're on your knees sucking off the gangs, all fifteen of you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. The next speaker is Juan Alcala. Mr. Alcala, you have one minute left.
I know.
And please stick to the item, please.
More than enough time to offer a reward for the, for the hairpiece worn by Donald Trump. I'm offering a fifty thousand dollar reward whoever gets the, the hairpiece that Donald Trump wears.
You're not on the subject, sir.
Oh, no, no, the subject is a reward for another snitches get stitches kind of situation where nobody is going to come forward to claim anything because they're more afraid of the police than they're afraid of other community members. The biggest gang is the police. We all know that. As Mr. Lee Vaca, who's headed over to jail.
Thank you, Mr. Alcala. You're done. You're not on the subject. Thank you. That concludes cards on item number ten. Mr. Clerk, let's open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That item passes. Mr. Clerk, let's move on to our special meeting.
Very good, Madam President. Blumenfeld, Bonnebuscagno, Sodio, Englander, Fuentes, Harris, Dawson, Weiser, Kresker, Corian, Martinez, Oferal, Price, Rue, Wesson, twelve members present. Item twelve is an item for which a public hearing has been held. There is an amending motion. That's item twelve A. It has been circulated and is now before counsel for its consideration.
Okay, without objection, that item's before us. Are there any cards on this item?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Previn, item twelve, sir.
It's Eric Previn from CD two. Good morning, counsel. What is the amending motion? City Attorney?
The amending motion is posted.
Posted where, sir?
On the board.
Would you defer and let me look at it? Is it substantial?
We're going to take public comment, yes.
But, okay, so I'm going to be speaking in the dark as to the amendment?
Please continue, Mr. Previn. The item, the amendment's been posted, so.
Okay, so we'll go through the motion. Okay. So this is a, sort of the issue of our time. This has to deal with affordable housing and the Housing Authority and such. And this is involving a number of pipeline projects. One in particular, we are going to be, called the King 1101 Project. We're going to be asking for, or providing $2.18 million in additional tax credits. These are, these are a number of projects, all in this item together, that were passed up north to get additional funding, and they did not make it. There's a lot of competition for these projects. This is, this is difficult work to qualify because there's a lot of competition statewide. I think these are probably worthy projects. The other one, called PATH Metro Villas One, is also seeking an additional, I think, nine percent tax credit. And they're being recommended by our group to be gussied up for better consideration next time. These were both approved in the 2015. You know, I would applaud the board on these, the, the, the council, rather, on, on this effort. This is a difficult task. But it speaks a little bit to how mired we are because all in, I believe, this touches on approximately 400 units for affordable and low-cost housing.
Thank you, Mr. Previn.
Why would that be sixty seconds? Was that an error?
Thank you, sir. You're done on item twelve.
That was sixty seconds?
We have, we have no more cards on this item, Mr. Clerk? That was two minutes.
No more cards, ma'am.
Let's open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
There's, there's an urgent fourth with on this item, so we need to vote on that as well. So urgent fourth with on item number twelve. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, what's next?
Madam President, would you like to adjourn the special and return to the regular?
Yeah, let's adjourn the special meeting and return to our regular meeting.
Very, very good. That brings us to item number one, called Special for Cards. Madam President, before doing so, there have been requests to continue items one AJ, B, D, H, Q, A B, and A G to March twenty-nine, as well as requests to continue items one V, A, C, N, O, A E, and A, excuse me, A A to March eighteen.
Okay, without objection, that will be the order. Let's move on to cards. Mr. Walsh on item one.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or Jay Walsh Confidential, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. And these, again, are the protests and appeals for the liens. Property, property owners have liens because they didn't pay their taxes. You're doing a good job here. Remember, when you do a good job, I am the first to repeatedly congratulate you. When you do a terrible job, I am the first to excoriate you. On this issue, on hearing protest, on building and safety, you're doing excellent work. Thank you.
Next speaker, Mr. Previn. On item one. Mr. Alcala, can you please find your seat?
Oh, I dropped my visitor's pass. I'm just picking it up. I don't want to get arrested.
The sergeant will show you to your seat, sir. Mr. Previn, can you please come up?
Yes, it's Eric Previn from CD two. And for the record, the, there's an additional $2.050 million from that last item that was added and will be apparently reimbursed, but it doesn't say by whom. And it is for a completely different project. So I think that you're improper on that, City Attorney. Item number one is the lien item, as we know. And someone said at one point that they were concerned because a number of the fines and penalties are identical. So that, for example, in today's agenda, there are, I believe there's about six items that each have a penalty of $1,288.56. And so that might be because they all had the same violation and it was exactly the same amount of time, so that would make sense. But I actually checked, and it's not even remotely like that. It is wildly divergent cases that all have arrived at the exact same price. One in Mr. Englander's district, CD twelve, where there was someone being penalized for having open storage on their property and, and trash around, which obviously, in 2011. Another one where you have a graffiti, a building which had some graffiti on it, and was tagged in, again, a different year. And yet they've arrived at these exact same penalties. So I think that we have to do a little bit of an investigation as to what might be fraudulent conduct. This is obviously a group that has been accused of that with great regularity building and safety because people come down here and caffect one after another as to how is it possible, since it's been resolved. In one that I looked at, it actually said right on the, the document that substantiates what the claim was, "Close file, 2011." So, I mean, I don't know why any of you would put your names on this stuff. I think we need to find a system in 2016 that is comprehensive and understandable and not onerous and punitive towards residents.
Next speaker, Wayne Spindler. Item number one.
Back in the hood on item one with the hood. So, now, you try to speak on fucking special items and you have to go back to bullshit, so that's all right. Now, we have liens, CD eight, one B, CD eight, one D, CD eight, one I, CD eight, one Q. All of these items must be forgiven. One A B, CD eight. One A G, CD eight. They must be forgiven because it's Black History Month. All Negroes and all people of the colored persuasion must be given amnesty on their liens for the month of February. That's the deal that was made. That is the sacred creed that was made. And that's why Reverend Sharpton will be here for the Oscars on Sunday and Saturday.
You're not speaking on, on an issue.
And he will come and talk about liens as one issue of many because liens take away homes from black people and put them on the streets. Liens are the devil. Liens are evil. Liens are oppression. Liens are what caused slavery in the 21st century. We have to get rid of fucking liens in CD eight, CD nine. We would do it in CD ten, but it's ran by an Uncle Tom, so we have to go to eight and nine and Black History Month.
You're not speaking on the subject.
Get rid of the liens.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler. You're done. Next speaker is Juan Alcala. You're done. Mr. Alcala, item number one.
So clearly, all these liens are illegal and immoral, and you guys are the damn crooks that should be leaned upon.
You're out of time. Ivan Michelle Autry, item one. Mr. Alcala, I'm going to have you remove your Ivan Michelle Autry?
Well, you know, I still find that there seem to be double standards. And the fact that there have been no black nominations really, for me, personifies the type of white society that you
This is not responsible. You are not speaking on the topic. This is item number one.
I'm about to. I still, you know, having a history of, of land, of real estate owners in my family dealing with liens and dealing with assessment of property taxes, it still appears to me as if black people and people of color, economically challenged people, but especially, I would say, black people are inordinately, are predisposed to even a greater taxation than the middle-class, you know, mainstream white constituency, especially, of course, the Jewish people.
This is still not on the topic.
And now even the new Jewish people, who are the Hispanic people.
No, you're not speaking on the topic, ma'am.
Well, no, I think that there is a real dichotomy, and that needs to be exposed. As you know, there is a real nigger tax. Yeah, where black people are still taxed.
You're not speaking on the topic. Thank you.
More so than white people.
Thank you. You're done. You're not speaking on the topic. Thank you very much.
It is. It's just something you don't want on the record.
You can sit down. That is, that concludes cards for this item.
Can't tell me to sit down, bitch.
Mr. Clerk? It's okay. Sit down.
The speaker is disrupting the meetings still.
Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you. Let's move on to public comment.
Madam Speaker.
Mr. Blumenfeld?
I'm sorry. On one A C, I'd like to ask that the late fee be waived. One, item one A C.
Okay, we just voted on this item, so.
We'd have to reconsider that matter, Madam President.
With your indulgence, I'd like to ask for reconsideration.
Sure, let's reconsider item one.
One A C, yeah.
Let's open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, that was on reconsideration. Now the items before us, Mr. Blumenfeld?
On item number one A C, I'd like to waive the late fee. Five hundred and four? Five hundred and four.
And that would be $504.
Okay, that item's before us now. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Very well, thank you. Let's now move on to public comment. First speaker is Irma Gibson. Are you here?
Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning.
I'm coming before you on behalf of the young people in our Youth Ambassador Program. I believe I was here in August, and I presented the young people to you all and explained to you the program that they were involved in and the amount of support that they would be needing. And I saw all these agreeable faces and nods to let, let me know what we can, what you can do for us. So I'm here today. I have packets that I'm going to have handed out to each and every one of you, explaining our program thoroughly. Our young people will be going to Washington, D.C. next month for a week with Up Close, a program where they will be competing with other students from all the countries, all the high schools throughout the city. And I would like them to go representative with your support in any way possible. I have passed out packets, and I, I hope that you look at them and take them into serious consideration. Thank you for giving me the time. Thank you for giving me the time to speak.
Will do. Thank you very much for coming. The next speaker is John Walsh, followed by Eric Previn and Wayne Spindler.
John Walsh tweeting at HollywoodDems, or Jay Walsh Confidential. It's important to understand, Sunday afternoon, we are going to have the largest demonstration in the history of Hollywood led by the Reverend Al Sharpton. Please show up at 2:00 p.m. in front of the Hollywood High School. That's one block south of where the Oscar's going to be. It's at Highland and Sunset. When the crowd gathers, there'll be 15,000 or 20,000, and then, when we are told, we will descend on the Oscar cast, where the mayor and all of you will be inside, being protected by white cops and white-spirited cops. Remember, 2:00 p.m. this Sunday in front of Hollywood High at Sunset and Highland Avenue.
Next speaker, Mr. Previn, followed by Wayne Spindler.
Yes, it's Eric Previn from CD2. And the jig is up, Mr. Wesson. There's going to be no more violating public speakers in this hall, and the City Attorney, Mike Fuer, who is currently running for office again, I guess, needs to step forward. I have spoken with the district attorney. This behavior is, A, unsupportable, but, B, it erodes the basic feeling that the people who have elected all of you are being handled even close to appropriately. And I realize that you've done everything in your power to whip up a kind of confusion as to what's really happening in this room, but it's clear, and it is over. It is over. The four officers who frogmarched me out the other day need to provide their numbers today so that when I do meet with Chief Beck about instructing cops to break people's rights right in front of them and others on a regular basis, that will be brought to an end, okay? So it's over. Thank you for your interest.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Next speaker, Wayne Spindler, followed by Juan Alcala.
So, when it comes Sunday, the revolution begins on Sunday with the racist fucking Oscars that starts. Those with hoods, those without hoods, will come together to declare that you have a fucking award. Not one person other than white was nominated. Not one! You watch a movie, Creed, the black man was not even fucking nominated. How is that possible? Because L.A. is an apartheid city. This fucking place is ran by apartheid. And now at 2:00, come, join the Reverend Sharpton, lead the march, go into the Oscars, take over, 1964 style. Take this fucking city back from these motherfucking racists.
Now, can you please be quiet, ma'am?
The audience member's disrupting the meeting.
I'm going to have you removed, ma'am. I need you to be quiet. The next speaker is Juan Alcala.
I've been patiently waiting, and Mr. Spindler, he's completely right. This city is overtaken by white supremacist pigs that go around giving parking violations. Who the hell ever voted for a parking, for a parking law? The city has just taken it upon itself to violate the people over and over and over, every day. Who the fuck gave government the authority to take more and more money from people that barely have any money? What the hell is wrong with you fucking Nazis? Why? Why? Why are you doing this to people? Corretts, go back to over there, you know? They kick your ass out of Germany. You know what I mean?
Thank you, Mr. Alcala. Next speaker, next speaker, Michael, Ivan Michelle Autry?
You know, I love my colleagues, and they speak off-item all the time, but I realize you're ingrained with that mentality where you will never tell a white male to sit down, but a black woman you will. Maybe you had a flashback to your chola mama days. You know, again, this is America. My people built this country, not yours. I don't have any racist problems, you know, with Latinos or Latinas, but people like you, I do. You don't have a right to tell me to sit down. You have never said that to Wayne Spindler because he's a white male. Yeah, and that's deeply ingrained in your mentality. But first of all, what I'd like to say is that, for those that have engineered this society, namely the Zionist Jewish people, Mormons, those that have the money, again, I'm not going to accept my reparations in the form of homelessness. You say that we have too much, so you come and take it, damaging everything that we have. And these are Jewish people hiring a Mexican maintenance man to put holes in my clothes. I'm not going to be in the streets so vampires, cannibals, pedophiles, pimps can exploit me. So-
Thank you, Ms. Autry. Have a great weekend. Thank you very much. That concludes public comments. Members, are there any announcements? Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you. The L.A. waterfront is on the move, colleagues, and this Saturday, L.A.'s newest and greenest brewery is opening. Brewery West, Mr. Weezer, amazing craft beer. We'll head down one of these days, head down there. Brewery West at Crafted at the Port of Los Angeles this Saturday. I was just telling Mr. Bana and Mr. Blumenfeld, amazing coverage from the L.A. Times, L.A. Weekly. It will be opening on Saturday from noon to 9:00 p.m. Food trucks, entertainment from our local San Pedro bands, 110 East 22nd Street Warehouse 9 at Crafted. Everyone is welcome. Thank you, Madam President.
Any other announcements? Mr. Blumenfeld?
You guys don't show up.
Mr. Rue? Mr. Price? Mr. Clerk, let's post them before all the motions. Okay, any adjourned motions? Can we please rise? Mr. Corretts?
Thank you, Madam President. In January, we lost Jean Cordova to cancer, and she was a great champion for LGBT rights and causes. She attended high school in La Puente and then entered the Immaculate Heart of Mary Convent. She went on to get her bachelor's degree in social welfare from UCLA and her master's in social work from UCLA. She was a leader in many ways in the LGBT community. She founded and published The Lesbian Tide. She started the gay and lesbian community Yellow Pages, which was very significant, especially back in the day. She was L.A. chapter president of the Daughters of Billitus and originated the first national lesbian conference, which took place at UCLA in the '70s, as well as a number of other key conferences. She was the human rights editor of the Los Angeles Free Press way back when. She was the Southern California media director of the campaign in 1978 to beat the anti-gay Briggs Initiative Proposition 6, which is where I first met her, and served in the same role in the Stop 64 effort to beat the larush AIDS quarantine ballot measure. She was also president of the Stonewall Democratic Club and helped start the Democratic Party's Gay and Lesbian Caucus. Those are just some of her many accomplishments, which also include serving as president of one national gay and lesbian archive. She wrote an award-winning book entitled, When We Were Outlaws: A Memoir of Love and Revolution. She went to Mexico and lived there for eight years, during which time she and her life partner Lynn Harris Allen co-founded a nonprofit organization for economic justice. She was an amazing, inspiring, courageous, and productive person in her 67 years, and she is survived by her partner Lynn Harris Allen, and she'll be greatly missed.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. Any other adjourned motions on my right? On my left, Mr. Blumenfeld?
Thank you. I'd like to adjourn in the memory of an incredible man who was a pioneering inventor, engineer, investor, philanthropist. His name is Al Mann, or Alfred Mann. He was born in Portland, Oregon in 1925. His father was a grocer who immigrated from England; his mother was a singer and a pianist who immigrated from Poland. He served in the Army Corps during World War II, then settled Southern California, where he earned a physics degree from UCLA. He was an amazing person. He founded 17 different companies in fields ranging from aerospace to pharmaceuticals to medical devices. All these companies were based in the San Fernando Valley and Santa Clarita Valleys. His inventions touched the lives of so many people. Some of the remarkable breakthroughs under his watch included the first rechargeable pacemaker, an inhalable form of insulin, an artificial retina that allowed blind people to see, a cochlear implant. I first met him back in the '90s. He came, I was working for Congressman Berman in Washington, and he was this passionate guy about a pacemaker. We needed to change the federal law because he had basically reinvented what could be done with some of these medical devices. And in doing that, his passion was so clear about how he wanted to help millions of people, and that really is what he did with his life, hundreds of millions of people, when you think about all of his inventions and businesses. He's not only a leader in business, he was a philanthropist. He founded and endowed the Al Mann Foundation, a nonprofit research organization devoted to the development of advanced medical products in a variety of fields. He also established the Al Mann Institute for Biomedical Engineering at USC as a nonprofit organization to bridge the gap between biomedical invention and the creation of commercially successful medical projects, products to improve lives. Throughout his 90 years, he was someone who made a major impact in ways that touch all of our lives, but we don't see it every day. And those who directly benefit from some of those products have had just quantum leaps, being able to see when they couldn't see, being able to hear when they couldn't hear, being able to live when they wouldn't have a heart. So with that, I ask that we adjourn in his memory. Thank you. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Blumenfeld. Any other adjourned motions? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, can you please schedule all of today's Rule 16 motions for Tuesday, March 1? Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.